Sorry to keep you waiting, everyone. I'd call the order, the call to order of the regular meeting of the Sherwood City Council for January 15th. Would you all stand in for the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call Sylvia.
Council President Grant.
Here.
Counselor Henderson.
Here.
Counselor Folsom.
Here.
Counselor Clark.
Here.
Counselor Butterfield.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you Sylvia. Okay, big group tonight for new business. The first order would be the swearing in of elected officials. Joe.
Council President Grant and counselors, I think Sylvia Murphy, our city recorder, is going to handle most of this, but just as a way of introduction, tonight we will be swearing in four members to the city council, three incumbents, and of course, soon to be Mayor Middleton, rather than Mayor-elect Middleton. So I know that you're going to try to do this all together, is that correct Sylvia?
I will do all of this, currently seated council members, and then we'll do Mayor-elect Middleton.
So do you want the three incumbents?
Yeah, why don't we have all three of the new elected, joined Mayor-elect Middleton at the front, or you're saying all three first and then Mayor?
Do that first and then him separately.
Okay.
So basically counsel, just repeat after me please, if you will. I, state your name.
I'm Henderson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the laws of the state of Oregon.
I will support the laws of the state of Oregon.
And the laws set forth in the city charter.
And the laws set forth in the city charter.
And I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially.
I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially.
Discharge the responsibilities bestowed upon me as a city council member for the city of Sherwood.
Discharge the responsibilities bestowed upon me.
As a city council member.
As a city council member.
For the city of Sherwood. Thank you.
Thank you Sylvia.
Thank you Sylvia, congratulations.
Mayor-elect Middleton, that's the last time I get to use that title, if you could come up please.
Don't make me laugh. I, state your name.
I, Phil Middleton.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the laws of the state of Oregon.
That I will support the laws of the state of Oregon.
And the laws set forth in the city charter.
And the laws set forth in the city charter.
And will faithfully, honestly, and impartially.
And will faithfully, honestly, and impartially.
Discharge the responsibilities bestowed upon me.
Discharge the responsibilities bestowed upon me.
As a city of Sherwood mayor.
As a city of Sherwood mayor.
Thank you.
All right, let's move one this way and he'll take this seat for now.
There's your comments.
Oh, okay, okay.
I had a little, that's mine, I'm lost without it.
Mayor and counsel, I just, I know that there's a new face across the table that you may not know, this is Chad Jacobs, he's with Barry Elsner and him in our city attorney's office, and I don't think he's been out here very much, maybe this is the first time to Sherwood. Chad, you've been with the firm for about a year, is that correct?
I've been with the firm for a year and a half, and before that I was with the general counsel for the League of Orange Cities for about three years.
So just if you're wondering who the gentleman in the other side of the room is, so, thank you.
Well, we have a few more items on new business, the first is the election of the council president, and I'd like to nominate Linda Henderson.
Second.
Don't I have to accept?
Would you accept that position?
Yes, sir, thank you, I accept.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, aye, sorry. It's a right to vote for yourself.
The next is the consent agenda, I promise this will be quick, I promise. The first is the consent agenda, is there any amendments to it? Thank you. Do you have a motion to approve?
I'll move we adopt consent.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
One more thing, is I have presentations, tomorrow night I'm going to meet with the school board, and it's school board recognition month, and everybody's got to recognize what a fantastic job they're doing, so I will be there tomorrow night at seven, so anybody who wants to go there, we will be reading a proclamation from the city over there, so it's really nice, and they're really looking forward to it, and I've already met with superintendent, super people, so couldn't do better. Then, after that, I just wanted to take a few minutes to thank everybody, I couldn't have done this without the public, and so it's great, and I think we've got a good, great city council to work with, I mean, you know, obviously we have some different views, but we'll bring them together, that's what a team is, and we're all going to be a team, so I look forward to working with everybody here, and I especially look forward to working with the public. You have any questions, give me a holler. Selma, thanks. Susan, thanks. Jackie, I wish I could name everybody in here who helped me, but there's just too many, and I just, oh Paul, yeah, right, Paul helped me set up signs, so, but there's so many great people here, and the Rotary, I can't thank them enough for doing tonight, they set up, Mary and Carrie, set up, Mary Ann and Carrie set up all the food and all that, so I just, I hope we have this many people at all the meetings, but I don't expect it, so, because I didn't come to too many myself, because you can watch them on TV. Okay, the next is citizen comments, and we have two. Amber Gardner, would you like to come up?
Hi there.
Hello.
Thank you for seeing us.
Not a problem.
My name is Amber Gardner, I'm a resident, know many of you, but I also wanted to come here on behalf of Cash Mob Sherwood tonight, and just thank everybody who has been supportive of the Cash Mob movement that's been going on in Sherwood for almost a year now, we're marrying our 11th Cash Mob, we do this every month in honor and celebration and appreciation of locally owned businesses throughout the city of Sherwood, and throughout the remaining area. And we wanted to thank our city managers and counselors and past and present mayor for all their support in the various ways that they have been doing that in addition to the community, just formally introduce ourselves and ask you as we move forward entering our one year supporting the city of Sherwood with the thousands of people who've come out to Cash Mob, in addition to the thousands of dollars that have been reinvested into our economy, to consider a proclamation declaring the second Saturday of every month Cash Mob Sherwood Day. Supporting local.
Hey, I'm new at this.
Mayor and counsel, we could certainly bring a resolution back at your next meeting two weeks from tonight, that we can draft and work with the Cash Mob folks.
I think it'd be a great idea.
To do that if there's interest at the council, and I'm seeing lots of head nods, so.
It's been a very well organized event, and I know I've seen a lot of faces there, it just might be a great way for us to kind of set in stone a coalition that goes along with this community effort.
Sure.
That can really make things simple, and just this organic movement that has really taken root here to let everybody know you can expect it on a certain day, and we'll continue to watch these spontaneous, fun, non-flash mob dancing movements. I mean, back in towards our economy, that has been very, very well received, and really brought around a ripple effect that's been positive in the community in addition to the many causes that these businesses also support, just really taking the time to recognize them and give back to.
Can you give your address, so she can have your address also?
We have it.
Oh, you have it? Also, I may have missed it, where's the next one at? The feed store?
We did do it at the feed store last month, it was at, you know, I am going to just tell you guys, we always do this, we're going to start doing this two days in advance, that's kind of part of the Cash Mob concept whenever we do Cash Mobs, but I have to tell you, this is a great onion.
And they are captive.
What time only is the Friday? In honor of Phil, and everybody else here, it is going to be in honor of getting that message out there, because this is about advertising and promoting and honoring our local businesses in our community. Please come, have our first ever happy hour between three and five at Clancy's, who is also celebrating not only being a fantastic member of our community, but they have recently had a, without going into too much details in respect to people's privacy, but they have a wrong kind of boy who is now battling breast cancer, and they just found out the same day they found out that they were going to get a Cash Mob, which is fantastic, so we want to just make sure that we honor them and support them as a business, but also if you want to make a donation, we can do that.
Well, thank you.
And Amber didn't mention, but you can friend Cash Mob on Facebook and then get reminders on your iPhone, so you don't have to remember, it'll automatically print on your iPhone, or, I'm not sure if it'll print on another kind.
Android.
Okay, sorry, I showed my bias.
I don't agree with your one.
But that's a great way to find out when the Cash Mob's happening.
For those that are not on Facebook, visit CashMobSherwood.com, you can also find out what it is.
Can you spend a little bit of time and tell those people that are watching what Cash Mob is?
Absolutely, Cash Mob was, I'll just kind of get a little history on it.
Could you just speak into the mic? That way when they, when it's shown on the TV, they'll be able to hear you clearer.
Or on TV too.
Oh, you will be.
Okay, hello. Okay, so Cash Mob, basically this has become a national movement, this was a very organic thing that happened in a community where a gentleman saw some businesses closing up in his town and wanted to find a way about a year ago to keep those doors open, so he rallied together some friends, his name is Andrew Stanway, and we've become friends in the process, which has been a great thing, that has come of cash mobbing, as the area communities, neighboring towns, chambers of commerce, all the different walks that we have been able to be a part of to support each other and grow these movements in our community. He started this to try to help really keep the doors open in his community and support the local businesses that are such a part, they are the heart and soul of our communities, and we need to basically, you know, pay close attention to those businesses and give back to those businesses to keep those doors open. He had seen a few businesses that he, that he patroned quite often, close their doors, and thought this would be fun if we just got some friends together and went out and, you know, did a Cash Mob, and I saw this on the nightly news, and did the same thing, contacted him first to see if this is something that we could also do, I could definitely relate to what he was talking about, we are a small community, and I thought this would be a great way for us to do the same thing in our community and offer a positive effect to a continuing concern. And we have since become friends, and Cash Mobs all over have been sprouting typically one per community, and we decided to start doing it here, rallied together some friends, and through social media, which is really how this is driven, we get the word out and do it through text messaging, Facebook, Twitter, website, Google, word of mouth marketing, create a really positive opportunity for businesses to be a part of word of mouth marketing, and select one business every single month by random drawing, our goal is to always keep the businesses front and center, so we have the business that was mobbed draw by blind random drawing through picture, they hold up the sign of who they draw, the next business that's going to be mobbed, so they're passing the torch from one business to the next, which has been a really fun concept in keeping it very fair and neutral, and drawing positive attention from one business to the next, and keeping those names out there as they work collaboratively amongst each other, and we get the word out, and we get the positive buzz going, and it's just a great opportunity for them to participate at zero cost to them, we are there to pump money into their local business, so they can have the opportunity, for instance, Sweet Story in May, or sorry, excuse me, March of 2012 was our very first Cash Mob. After two hours of being at her location, she shared with us that she was able to pay her lease and utilities, and the two hours of money rang through the register because of all the people who came out to support her business, that also ended up being a fantastic opportunity, being a new business in the city of Sherwood, for people to realize, wow, this is a great local bakery that we have here in Old Town Sherwood that I maybe didn't know about, or that they did know about but wanted to be a part of celebrating, thank you for being here, I appreciate you donating to my cause or my school or what have you. And there have been a number of different results that have come of that, each coming with their own story, and each being a mob that seems to have come at the perfect timing, and we have no control over that, but it really feels like there's something bigger happening there, and it's been a really fun thing to be a part of, and it's been a positive impact, I think, on the local economy, just people having more top of mind awareness that comes from the positive effects of us continuing to think about our local businesses first. That's kind of a good summary, but I think the very best thing you can do is come to a Cash Mob and experience it, because it takes on a whole life of its own.
And Bob's been here forever, and his son's running it now, and they're just great people, so.
Yeah.
What's the date for Clancy's again?
It's this, not this Saturday, the following Saturday.
From three to five?
From three to five, so, next Saturday, from three to five, it would be fantastic if everybody comes down, they have arranged to have takeout orders available, they sell gift certificates, in addition to, they're going to have a special happy hour menu, plenty of seating, so whether you want to take it and go, you want to, you know, have some munchies and mingle, or just grab a gift certificate, it's a great excuse for you to come, check out a business, and just get to know it, know what's in your community, or pick up a gift for somebody else, we can always find a way to justify those purchases, and it's, we say any amount that you want to spend is recommended, because whatever you feel is within your means, as long as we're shopping local, my $20 goes much further when 100 people show up with that same $20.
Well, great, thank you very much.
Thank you for your consideration.
The next person is Mr. Anderson wants to come up. I've talked to you, haven't seen you for a while.
Just a reminder for the television viewing audience, which I know is large, if you can speak into the microphone, that'd be great, thanks.
I'll do that. Thank you, I'm Wade Anderson, I'm a resident here in Sherwood in the Glen Eagle neighborhood, thank you for our time this evening. First, congratulations to those who have been reelected to serve as a new term, as well as our new Mayor Middleton. I come to city council tonight representing the several hundred residents of the Glen Eagle subdivision along Sherwood Boulevard. Glen Eagle is truly unique, both today and in Sherwood's history. Created after the sale of the Height Family Farm in the late 1960s, Glen Eagle was one of the first planned subdivisions in Sherwood. Things we take for granted in many Sherwood neighborhoods, such as buried power, CCNRs, great walkability, gentle curved streets, and an incredible view of a rich green space that's a hallmark of many Sherwood neighborhoods, first appeared in Glen Eagle. As the years have progressed, Glen Eagle has transformed to become the most diverse neighborhood in Sherwood by ethnicity, age, and socioeconomic position. College-educated professionals live adjacent to others struggling to make it and service sector jobs. Young families such as mine live across the street from elderly couples like the Kennedys and the Gardeners, who have called Glen Eagle their home since it first opened in 1968. There's Dean, a salt-of-the-earth guy that's struggling with throat cancer but would lend you the last shirt on his back. Or Tim and Nancy Doll, who restore classic cars and erase them at the Woodburn Drag Strip. And there's Danny, a wonderful teenager with significant physical and developmental disabilities. You've probably met his mom Mikey, who begs at groceries at Albertson's. I could tell you many more stories. What first attracted me to Glen Eagle was nearby access to the bus line, easy foot access to Old Town and Six Corners, and affordable single level, single level homes. Homes on large lots that are large enough for kids to spread out, maybe grow a garden, provide a welcoming place for friends and family. In the years that we've lived there, my wife has endured a debilitating illness that's led to many a day on the couch in recovery. I've invested $30,000 in expanding our home to provide her with an incredible sweeping view of her backyard and the birds that come from the refuge each spring. There's two issues that the council will decide on in the coming days. One is the final alignment for the Cedar Creek Trail. Another is the town center plan. Both of these projects have direct impact on Glen Eagle. Let's take the example of the town center plan. In our recent Neighborhood Association meeting, 20 folks that came from every section of the neighborhood shared opposition to any plan to increase density in our neighborhood, and these are some of the examples of signatures, and I've had 10 more since then. Two of the three town center proposals increased density through encouraging redevelopment and the use of accessory dwelling units. Increased density in a neighborhood with no sidewalks, parking available only on one side of the street, and blind corners is a dangerous prospect that would transform the character of our neighborhood. Accessory dwelling units are possible in most cases only by tearing down existing single level homes and building multiple stories. This would render our neighborhood as no longer viable place for seniors or handicap folks to live. We would no longer be the diverse neighborhood that we are today. We're also disappointed by the negative comments made about the state of our neighborhood in recent city reports. We're no Woodhaven, but we're just as important to the city, especially in the diversity that we bring. I've seen numerous improvements made by neighbors in the past eight years that I've lived in Glen Eagle. What concerns Glen Eagle Neighborhood Association most is that we currently have no direct influence. While we've been offered the opportunity to provide some input during public outreach events, we have no seat at the table today. Instead, our fate is decided by others, others that face limited impact to their neighborhoods. I suggest this must change. I'm afraid this has been a pattern of our city. Some recent examples that I can talk to include the approval of the Dutch Brothers that was made based on a very flawed traffic study performed in July, when schools not in session and only from 7:00 to 9:00 a.m., that laughingly claims that an increase of only five cars as far as traffic. Neighbors within 1,000 feet confirm that they received no notification of the application. Another one affecting us was the Kohl's additional exits on 12th Street, and there was no outreach to Glen Eagle that we know of. 2013 is an opportunity for a new beginning. It's essential that the council, mayor, and staff turn over a new leaf. How? Engage your citizens. Reach out directly to those in the impact area. Don't consider bulletin boards on City Hall and the Sherwood Gazette notices that come out after the public comment period is closed as acceptable, and that's what happened, for example, in the case of Dutch Brothers. Open house events are a great start, but they should be part of a multifaceted plan. Let us, such as folks on Glen Eagle, serve on your advisory groups such as the Cedar Creek Trail, which we've applied to, and allow late arrivals to serve on the town center stakeholder advisory committee. Consider free technology such as Twitter feeds that citizens can subscribe to for text alerts. Add us to any notification emails you send out to the neighborhood associations, and expand the notification area for planning changes, and use the water bill as, for accurate addresses. As for us, these issues have had a good impact on us, and that we're now engaged citizens. There's actually many that are here tonight that I met, just met here in the last few weeks. We have a new neighborhood association. Neighbors are meeting neighbors and deepening a sense of community. We've even got a new logo. Thank you for your time this evening, please contact us when you have better options for our involvement in the town center plan and Cedar Creek Trail as we've requested. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have been engaged with you, and we'll continue, so, Julie, do you have something on?
Mayor and counsel, actually, Mr. Anderson has been in contact with myself and Mayor Middleton and Julia, so, there is an option, even though it's kind of late in the process, and we could return again in two weeks to formally have representation, which is, I think, what Mr. Anderson and the new HOA wants, to be part of the project. There are probably only going to be two or three more meetings, but if you wanted to consider that, as he said, a late arrival, we can certainly do that in two weeks and have a resolution appointing him to that stakeholder group if you so desire.
I have no problems with it, I think it'd be good for them to get involved in the process, so.
Okay, we'll do that then, thank you.
That's the end of citizens' comments. City manager report.
Mayor and counsel, I have a number of just minor reminder items, some for the public and then some for the council itself. The city newsletter, The Archer, has not gone out yet in January, usually The Archer goes out in the first of the month, I'm changing the timing of that, so it's going out this week, so it'll start going out mid-month. The Gazette goes out early in the month, and there is some information that's duplicative, so I think shifting it a little bit to the middle of the month is what we're going to do. More importantly, we are going through a process of redesigning The Archer, I think it's been the same format, same style for many, many, many years. We actually have an online survey on the website, so if citizens want to give us some input in terms of what that redesign, what's important to get, based on what Mr. Anderson said, people want to know what's going on in City Hall and in their community, so if you have the time, it'll take about three or four minutes to do the survey, I checked today, and we're a city of 18,000 people, and so far I have seven responses, so, a few more would be helpful, so, just a short reminder. Another group that's shifting their meeting, I just want to let the public know, the Sherwood Main Street Program, which has been very engaged and involved in Old Town, they have a monthly meeting, they're shifting it this month to 4:00 p.m., so it'll be this Thursday, January 17th at 4:00 at Rebecca Lodge, plenty of time to come to the town, open house. But if you're interested in Old Town activities and what's going on, and there are a lot of things going on in Old Town, or just want to learn more about the Sherwood Main Street Program, that would be a great meeting to attend, again, it's this Thursday at 4:00 at Rebecca Lodge. It is January, it's New Year, so we started the budget preparation process today, actually, in terms of my staff, a process that usually, well, actually it'll take six months, the end of the process is in June with you formally adopting a budget, but we began that process today, and that will obviously be my first budget as city manager, so I'm excited to actually start to get involved in putting a budget together, and I know Mayor Middleton has some ideas, he has shared already with me as well, so, that started off today. You do have a budget committee meeting at the end of this month, Monday, January 28th at 6:30 here in this room. The focus of that meeting at this point will be two-pronged, one is kind of six months here, here's where we are in terms of this year's budget, but more importantly, I think there's still a lot of questions and concerns and frustration with water bills and the cost of our water, I think Mayor Middleton, you said when you went around door-to-door, you heard a lot of that from folks, and I certainly had sticker shock when I moved here six months ago, so, I think the budget committee really wants to revisit, how did we get here, where are we, how do we compare with our neighbors, where we're going, so we're going to spend some time kind of going through the whole water system, and I think that will be helpful for everybody, and if the public's interested in that, that would be a good meeting to attend, just as background. Your next council meeting is on the next night, two weeks from tonight, on January 29th. Because of the New Year's holiday, we shifted everything two weeks, we'll get back to normal in February, but you will have a second meeting in January. The city council retreat also has shifted, usually we have a council retreat in January, but with everything shifting, we're going to have that retreat on Saturday, February 9th, we're actually going to have it at the Wildlife Refuge, they have a wonderful room there, and we booked that today, so, staff's working hard with the mayor and others to put that together, and I know Julia had a couple items you wanted to share, so.
Thank you, first, I wanted to thank Mr. Anderson for coming out, and actually, I wanted to thank him for galvanizing his neighborhood and actually forming this HOA, so that these property owners have more of a voice at the town center table. And speaking of the town center, I wanted to mention that hopefully you've seen the sign on the Robinhood Theater Board and posters around town, but there's an open house on the town center this Thursday from 5:30 to 7:30 here in this room, and as Mr. Anderson mentioned, there are three alternatives that have been developed, and we really need feedback from a lot of people on what different elements they like about those alternatives, what they don't like about those alternatives, so that we can move forward with a preferred alternative that will then move forward into a formal town center plan, and it's really critical that we get input from not just one group, but the whole study area, as well as citizens from outside the study area. I also wanted to mention, as Mr. Anderson mentioned, there's the Cedar Creek Trail, Local Trail Advisory Committee, and what they're trying to do is have representation from properties throughout the trail corridor, and they've gotten some really good applications from properties south of 99, but they're still looking for some applicants on the east side of Cedar Creek Corridor, north of 99, and so they've extended the deadline for submitting applications to February 4th at the next Parks Board meeting, so if you or anybody in the audience or anybody at home knows of somebody in that area that would really like to be part of that Local Trail Advisory Committee for the Cedar Creek Trail, we encourage you to come out to that meeting, if you have any questions, you can contact Michelle Miller at the city, her number is 503-625-4242. And then also, just a quick update on downtown streets, there's a meet and greet with contractors and the public on the 26th, and I was asked to mention if there's property owners, especially in the Old Town area, that are affected, that can't go to that meet and greet, to contact the city, specifically Jason Waters, so that we can make sure that we are able to sit down with you and explain the project and make sure you understand it.
One more item, because we had the Cash Mob folks here earlier, and you'll read about this in The Archer later this week, we have the downtown streets project that's going to kick off, which I think, once that's over, and we're trying to finish that before cruising, Sherwood obviously is the deadline that we'll be ready, it's going to be great for the streets that still are in the condition they are, which are Washington and Railroad. However, you'll read in my article in the newsletter, how important it is to support those businesses, I mean, those are small businesses mostly anyway, that are, that, you know, are trying to make it day-to-day, and then you throw a construction project on top of that, and it's a little harder to get there, so I really want to encourage citizens in the community to kind of think about those businesses and really, you know, maybe go out of their way during that construction season, because once they get through it, it's going to be a lot better, but the construction's going to be tough on them, and we're trying to work very closely to address their needs and whatever those specifics are, but I want to encourage folks, since we have such a big room tonight, to really do that. That project will kick off late January, early February, and we'll have a lot of construction in Old Town in the next six months, so, thank you. Any questions for me on anything tonight?
But I want to encourage folks, since we have such a big room tonight, to really do that. That project will kick off late January, early February, and we'll have a lot of construction in Old Town in the next six months, so, thank you. Any questions from you on anything tonight? Thank you.
You have any council announcements?
I am currently the liaison to the Cultural Arts Commission, and I just needed to discuss really quickly with council. They are moving forward with the formation of a 501(c)(3), which will allow them greater access to grants that municipalities are not always able to get, and as well as helping them establish a fundraising mechanism that can help the cultural center as it goes up. We, we just, it's kind of a critical time in the group's history, as they're trying to identify exactly who they're going to be from here on out. So, if any of you have any feedback or comments, I would really appreciate that. Shoot me an email, grab me sometime. Feel free to drop into the meetings. I wanted to thank publicly the members of the commission, because they're doing a lot of work. Last year, we put together our first community arts calendar, and we are working to make that happen again. And it was actually beautifully done and available in the library, and we'll make sure that we get it available in a lot of other places. We do have a couple of openings on the commission, and it is really going to be a happenin' board soon. And so, and they are working really hard to help the other organizations in the community have a greater, stronger networking. We had a couple of meetings last year where we gathered the other nonprofits in the community and said, how can we support one another? So, I'm really grateful for the work and efforts of that commission, but wanted to give you a heads up on the 501(c)(3) and make sure there weren't any strong objections for them going ahead in that process. And like I said, they're just revisiting what it is that we need them to do in the community, so feel free to shoot us any kind of information you'd like to pass on. Kristen, is there anything else I should mention about that? All right.
Anybody else? I just have one thing, I forgot to thank my wife for helping me on the campaign.
That was a good save.
Man, I almost forgot that one.
If I had a pen, I was going to pass you a note.
Yeah, I don't have my daughter here, she always tells me when the birthdays are, and so. With that it, I guess we're going to adjourn, and once again, thank you, everybody, for coming in. I'd love to see it this crowded every time, don't expect it, I'd love to see it, so, thank you very much.